Okay. I would like to welcome everyone joining us in person this evening and those who are viewing remotely as well. The board held an executive session on January 30th regarding personnel and legal matters. Board members, with the agenda before you, are there any changes? Okay. I would now like to call on the board secretary for a roll call.
Dr. Anderson, here. Dr. Bader, here. Ms. Brant, here. Dr. Buck, here. Dr. Krevikor, here. Dr. Duffy, here. Ms. Huff, here. Ms. Zidney, here.
Okay, thank you. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to interview candidates for the vacant seat of the Board of Directors. This individual will be appointed to serve until the next municipal election in November 2023. Candidates will be called on alphabetically and will have three to five minutes to provide remarks. Board members will have up to three minutes to ask clarifying questions if needed. In preparation for this meeting, candidates were asked to provide remarks based on the following. An introduction including background and experience and connection to SCASDI. What prompted them to seek this vacancy on the board? Are there any particular issues they hope to work on if they are chosen to fill the vacancy? And are they planning to run for school director or any other elected office in the 2023 election? So now, we will begin our interviews. It's alphabetical, so our first candidate is, I'd like to welcome Nathan Bish. If you could please come to the presenter's table. And we are excited to listen to your presentation. Welcome.
It's green, does that mean it's on?
You're on.
Hi, board members. My name is Nathan Bish. I'm a Ferguson Township resident with two elementary school children. Thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. If chosen as a school board member, my plan would be to work collaboratively with the other members of this team while holding productive sessions to make any changes necessary that are in the best interest of our children and school district. We may not see eye to eye on all things always, but our overall goal is the same, and that's the safety and education of our children. I'm a respected member in the community of a father of two elementary girls who will grow up in the school system. We have many friends and acquaintances within this school district, and it's our responsibility to provide the best for our children. When we had to work through an educational situation with our youngest daughter that provided to be quite challenging within the district, my wife and I made it our mission to make sure that we would be a voice and advocate for all students. This is what I will do. I want to work with all of you by bringing back the core values of the educational system that once made SCASDI a sought-after role model for our state. I feel very strongly that it's time to let parents do the parenting and educators do the educating. I have strong moral values and ethics and plan to incorporate all those into discussions with each of you. I may not hold the same stance on certain topics as each one of you, but I hope we can challenge one another and see different viewpoints and perspectives to address the community and parent desires across the board and each reach compromise. The current board makeup is of one political party and adding a ninth would serve no benefit to an underrepresented population of taxpayers and parents. In conclusion, some of you I've met casually, others more with conversation. Some great talks and ideas have been had, and I hope that your choice is me and we can all work together to achieve the highest goals in our community, more importantly, our children. Thank you, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any follow-up questions for Mr. Bish?
I do. Thank you so much for being here, and I appreciate you wanting to serve the board. I do have a question. You said you want core values. Could you elaborate more on what those values are?
Core values are, I think our focus needs to be, number one, on security and safety of our buildings, our staff, and our kids. And number two is education. I participated in the Strategic Planning Committee, and I was a little disheartened to see that there was a lot of talk about a lot of things that are obviously very important, but education kind of slipped down the chain.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from board members for Mr. Bish? Oh, Debbie, yes.
Hi, thanks for being here. I was just wondering if you were planning to run in the election for a school board?
I am.
Or anything else? You are? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick question, if you don't mind. Thanks for coming in, and thanks for putting yourself through this.
Absolutely.
When you say "education was missing," I'm not sure what that means. Expand on that a little bit in terms of what in the strategic planning process wasn't represented by education.
I'm not saying it wasn't represented. It wasn't represented as number one, number two, number three, in my opinion. We talked about it in there over the two-day period, but it seemed to be, we talked a lot more about social issues than we did about educational issues.
I don't want to put any words in your mouth, but I'm guessing in your talk, I'm wondering if you're not thinking about basic, fundamental skills in communication, basically, reading, mathematics.
Correct. Core education.
Core education, social studies, science, and so on. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Other questions?
No other questions, but I did want to thank you for having served on that committee, and I think you also served on the calendar committee, is that right?
Correct.
But thank you for stepping up for those.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you all.
Okay, next, the next candidate is Susan Hieschewski. So if you would come up to the presenter's table, make sure the microphone's still on, and you'll have up to five minutes for your presentation.
Is it on? Yes. All right. Well, thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Susan Hieschewski, and we recently moved back to the area in 2019, just in time for the pandemic. And during that time, right when we moved back, I actually substituted in the buildings. And I have to tell you, it brought my faith back because I had left Florida teaching with the mind that I was not going to go back in the classroom. And I was impressed with how the district was run. I felt very welcome as a new person there, and it was just a very good experience for me. To give you some of my background, I have two children. They are not in the district. They are 23 and 24. They were mostly educated in New York and Florida. I have three education degrees. So I have a degree in animal science, a degree in agricultural education, a master's and a PhD also in agricultural and extension education. I have almost 20 years' experience in the classroom, mostly in middle school science. My certifications are AgEd, general science, biology. I have a gifted endorsement that is not valid in Pennsylvania, but I have it. I have experience in inclusion teaching, technical teaching, gifted teaching. I have experience working in a juvenile facility with incarcerated students. All that experience said, we all know this board is about more than just what goes on in the classroom. It's about fiscal responsibility. It's about making sure every student that walks into this district feels welcome. They all feel included. I saw a quote this week that said, "Inclusion," I'm going to get it wrong, but one was "inclusion and belonging," and one was "one is inviting you to dance." I don't know. I thought it was a great quote, and I've butchered it maybe. Some of you are nodding, so that maybe you know it. Why apply to this? I feel like this time, it's not a good time to sit on the sidelines. I have a lot of experience. I have the time. I have the context, having taught in New York, Florida, Indiana, Delaware, and Pennsylvania. So I've seen school boards work differently in different places. As far as a particular issue that I'm interested in, I don't think I have one particular issue. I'm more of a student-centered candidate, having been a teacher. I am concerned with fiscal responsibility, having lived on Long Island where my property taxes were $16,000 a year. We don't want that to happen here. And I do intend to run.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Susan?
You hear?
Oh, sorry. I think Laurel was about to say.
You mentioned both teaching in New York, and you mentioned Long Island specifically, and your children were educated, at least partially, there as well. I know that the New York schools have, I think by state law, a sort of shared decision process, the parents and all. There's a school committee. So even though there's a board, there's also this thing at a local level. Do you have any experience in that? Or even if you don't, any thoughts on that divide being a teacher, the teacher versus board?
I served, when we first moved to Long Island and before I started teaching there, because there were a lot of hoops to jump through to get the certification in New York. I served on the teacher, mid-suffolk teacher board. I served on the IEP board. I guess I kind of skipped over all my volunteer experience. I was a teacher trainer in the Peace Corps. So I've done a few things. I'm sorry. So the question is, how do I feel about that?
The divide between teacher work and board work?
And parenting.
And board work?
And board work. I don't know why. Does it have to be a divide? I mean, there's always things that you disagree upon, or you have to come for common ground. So I wrote my master's thesis on community coalition building. And being aware of what every stakeholder is coming to the table for, what they might be expecting, is really important in finding that common ground and being respectful of each other in how you decide that. So there is some, like, education back and forth for a parent to understand what it's like for the teacher in the classroom. So I'm very big on differentiation, having been an inclusion teacher and a gifted teacher. The kids who have needs need their needs met. The kids who have talents need those nurtured. And the kids we call average have those things as well. And so as a parent, you're going to be very mama bear. This is my kid. Everything has to happen for my kid. But we also don't want to make martyrs out of our teachers, who have 150 students if they're at the secondary level. So I feel like I'm dancing around your question, but the basis of it is communication and understanding each other and meeting people where they are. Thank you, and thank you for coming and talking with us.
Peter?
She answered my question. It was about your work with gifted children, and you talked about it, so thank you.
They get pushed to the side too often.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Ed Fuller. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. Honored to be here. And I wanted to start by saying thank you to allowing all the candidates to speak. I thought that was the right decision and really supports democracy. So thank you very much. So I'm going to start off by saying I have two kids who went through the district, multiple schools. Both of them were special needs. One was really mild, one was pretty intensive. And then I have a son at Mount Nittany Middle School. So, and as some of you know, I've worked as a consultant for the district, so have some insights into some of the data and some of the issues going on. So I want to start with, State College is a great district. We all know that. Most districts would dive for the results that State College has. We're greater than 90% of the districts across the United States in terms of student achievement and student growth. Unfortunately, as you know, not all the students are experiencing that and participating in that success, and that's one of the things I'd like to focus on. So we know we have a racial and wealth achievement gap, and most districts do. The curriculum's not always culturally responsive, much less anti-racist in every school and in every classroom. Not all students are engaged and feel, or feel comfortable at their school, and I've had kids experience that a couple of times. Too many students don't like being at school, particularly in secondary schools, and that's part of the nature of secondary schools, but something we should address. Bullying continues to occur too frequently, and too many students report high levels of stress, and then LGBTQ+ students continue to say that they have negative experiences in schools, and that's consistent across schools as well. So my purpose is to work collaboratively with you and trying to achieve the really ambitious goals set forth in your strategic plan, which address all those issues that I just mentioned, and continue to move forward, because the district has made great strides since I've been here since 2011. It was great when I came here, and it's even better than it was when I got here. And I thank you all for that, because it really has made great strides. Some of the things I'd like to focus on would be ensuring equitable access to a rich curriculum that includes culturally relevant and anti-racist content, effective teaching in every single classroom, a culture focused on excellence and equity, in which our children feel engaged with and excited about school, in a bullying-free climate in which all students feel welcome and supported. So I think I'm uniquely qualified to be a school board member. Again, I've had children in the district and have a child in the district right now. I've been in education for 32 years, and I've been a teacher, math teacher. I've been educated to be a principal. I didn't actually serve as a principal. Completed a PhD in leadership and policy. I've taught classes for aspiring teachers, for principals and superintendents. In fact, I've taught many of the associate superintendents that have been here in the last 10 years and been on their dissertation committees. So I'm extremely knowledgeable about teaching and leading in the education field. I've worked with this district as a consultant on the strategic plan. I work with a number of districts on their strategic plans. I've worked with districts in Texas, Austin, Flugerville, Round Rock, Houston, and Dallas on leadership issues and equity issues. I've conducted a number of studies of high-performing schools, particularly for minoritized students and students living in poverty, and I'm actually starting a study like that in Pennsylvania. I have experience with governance. I have leadership and, I have experience in leadership in governments. I've been a director of several centers. I've been on boards of directors. I've served as the Chair of Educational Leadership Program. I've been on Faculty Council of College of Education. I'm now on Faculty Senate. So those of you who are professors know Faculty Senate at Penn State. So I understand governance issues, and there's rules and procedures, and you don't step on people's toes because you have rules and procedures about how things work. And getting close to the end, I want to say that all that education experience gives me a wealth of information, and I do research on leadership and policy and can bring research on leadership and policy to the board and to the district, as I have in the past, on policies that actually got passed by the district. In sum, I have the knowledge, skills, dispositions to work with the current board to continue to focus on excellence and equity as we strive to meet the strategic plan goals. Thank you.
Good timing.
That was pretty good, huh? That's from 20 years of giving conference presentations.
Okay, board members, any follow-up questions for Dr. Fuller?
Have you considered running for school board in the past?
Thank you for, I was going to mention that at the end. I even had six seconds to say it, and I didn't. If I get appointed, I certainly would run again. I'm leaning towards running even if I'm not appointed. I need to do a little more research, which would be to talk to you all about the time commitment. That's the only thing that worries me. But I would like to run.
A quick question. And again, thanks for joining this discussion and putting yourself forward. This is more of a conceptual, theoretical question, a practical one, actually. What do you consider the top two to three challenges to public education in Pennsylvania, with particular attention to State College, of course, but thinking of it in terms of the operational side, but also the fiscal side?
Operational and fiscal, you said?
Fiscal, yeah.
Yeah, part of it is, with respect to the fiscal side, State College is in a much better position than most districts. A lot of districts are simply underfunded, and I know we've been pressing to get that addressed. But I would say, I mean, even State College could use more money. Operationally, I'm not sure what you would mean in terms of operationally and...
Doing his business, in terms of getting things, in terms of the fundamentals of what it means to have kids in classrooms, to have them engaged.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Thinking about, I hadn't thought about this until this second, but thinking about the relationships with families, for example, as one challenge. Not that it's, it's just as part of the process of conducting education.
I think one of the big impediments right now is the highly politicized environment that we live in, and it's hard for people to have, you know, sit down and have discussions with each other and try to come to consensus without attacking each other and, you know, and just calling each other names. And, you know, that makes it difficult to engage everybody in the community, and even within classrooms. I know there's issues when students believe one thing and teachers might believe something else, and, you know, kids are talking back and forth. I think just the environment is difficult, and it makes educating students and engaging with the community much more difficult than when I was an educator. Part of it also is the legislature, the General Assembly. I mean, I think they do more harm than good to school districts in this state, so hopefully that'll change.
Yeah, I was thinking, and thank you for referring to the statewide implications. That was in my question. Thank you.
Amy?
Well, I know we're out of time, and it's not actually a question, but I think this is a good opportunity to just give some commentary for the entire group of candidates. You mentioned about having questions for us about the time commitment, and I know we talked a little bit about wanting to make sure it's clear to candidates what a time commitment is like as a board member. The time commitment to run for election is very different, but the commitment for an individual as a board member, it certainly varies. We have some board members that are more able to be more flexible in their time and are more readily attending events and outreach and community engagement and things like that. However, that is an important part of what we do, and so your presence at those kinds of functions are important. We do school visits. We visit every building every year, and that usually takes an hour or two hours each time we visit a school, sometimes a little longer if we get chatty. We tour buildings and visit classrooms, see what teachers are doing, and that's really informative for a board member to understand as you face decisions on different programs, whether it's launching a new curriculum or a building project or making decisions about policy-level things. Seeing students in the classroom is really key. So while, again, not all school board members attend every visit, attending at least some of those is important. We all participate on some level of committee work. We have appointments in other places, like the, DAM serves on the IU or Central Intermediate Unit. We have other board members that serve that role as well. Those can be nights. These can be weekends. We have representation on our educational foundation. So those appointments vary. We have regular board meetings twice a month on Mondays, but... We have regular board meetings twice a month on Mondays, but sometimes we have work sessions, like we had the SBPA and LERTA discussion as a work session just this past Monday, so we'll have had three Monday night meetings this month. May gets to be insane with all the student award sessions and things like that. So it's important for, I think, all the candidates to understand what the time commitment involves. It's more than just the actual board meetings you're attending, there's a lot of other functions that it's important to be connected to the school community, and certainly then preparation of materials for board meetings is another investment of your time, to be ready to fully discuss items and be prepared to vote. So I think Gretchen alluded to it recently, as anywhere from a part-time to full-time job, depending on how engaged you get in. So that's just a quick spiel about...
Thank you, Amy, and I think that was important to go ahead and say that to all the candidates here, that it might be a bigger time commitment than you see just watching board meetings. So, thanks for pointing that out, Amy, and thank you, Ed, for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Okay, next we have John Hook, and I also wanted to say quickly, Miriam, if you have any questions, please feel free, okay, to ask. Yeah, okay, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for spending a few minutes and listening to me this night. The State College School District is a pretty great school district. The mission of the State College School District, our district, is to prepare students for lifelong success through excellence in education. Here's the thing about that mission statement, the word "school" is not in that, all right? The word "school" appears nowhere in that mission statement. The word is "education," and that's what's important. Now, for the last 100 years or so, the last century, the words "education" and "school" have been maybe synonymous, but that's, we're now in the 21st century. The name, the word "school" and the word "education" are no longer synonymous, and education is taking place in many places, in many locales that are not anything close to being considered, you know, what you would consider a traditional school, and they're happening in all kinds of locations that aren't even, you know, that couldn't even be close to considered schools. So the importance for us is to be focused on the education, like the mission says. Last, a couple of years ago, we created a school climate inclusive excellence policy, and that policy for the school district suggests that the State College community benefits when diversity in thought and learning are recognized and utilized. And that's why I'm answering question number two first, which is why am I here seeking this board membership? And that's because I believe that I can represent that diversity in thought and learning. The first question that you're interested in, introduction to my background and experience, you have my resume and you have my bio, so I'll try not to be redundant here. And some of you have worked with me, Randy, in addition. I've been on the State College, the Citizens Advisory Committee for Finance for over 10 years, so some of you do know me. But in the meantime, a few little personal notes, my wife is a State College native. She's a State High grad from 1979. Both of our children are State High grads, although they did take very different routes to get to that graduation. Our daughter was home-educated for most of her 12 years, took a couple of courses in the last two years of her high school education and got her diploma. Then she went online and got her college diploma from UCF, and graduated one of the cum laudes, there's a lot of doctors here, you probably know better than I do which one it is. And our son did home education for five years, did charter school for a year, and then did traditional schooling here, played on the soccer team and played on the football team, graduated, and is graduating in May from University of Buffalo with a 3.9 GPA, also one of those cum laude things, don't know which one. So that's a short introduction about me and my connection to SCASD. As for the question, are there any particular issues that I would want to work on or hope to work on if chosen to fill this vacancy? On January 10th, in StateCollege.com, some of you may know, I do write a bi-weekly column for StateCollege.com. If you did read it in there, I listed a number of things that I would work on. I do have copies of that column if you have not read it and would like, I'm happy to distribute them to you. And, so I don't really want to be redundant on that column, but quickly, just a few things, the change of the election of the school board members from an at-large to a region election, changing the name of the school district to the State College Area Education District, the teachers' union is not the school, you know, State College Teachers' Union, it's the State College Education Association, stop raising taxes, and support alternative education models. Those are the things that I would like to work on if I was chosen to be a member of the board. And are I planning to run for school director? I don't know, and I'm, I couldn't tell you, and if you'd asked me three weeks if I was going to be sitting here, I would have said no. So, you know, to say anything else is just going to be pulling your chain, so. That's me. Questions?
Questions? Carlene?
Thank you so much for being here. The last thing you just said about if they have asked you, well, last week, would you have done this, you would have said no. What made you change your mind?
Well, three weeks ago, if you'd asked me.
Okay.
What made me, what made me change my mind is that after writing the column, a number of people unsolicited said to me, in essence, "Why don't you put your money where your mouth is," to use a colloquialism. And, so I, you know, my wife and I talked about it and said, "Okay, well, you know, what's the, you know, what's the chance of getting chosen, probably next to nothing?" But nonetheless, here I am, so there you go.
Laurel?
Thank you for being here and also for serving on the Citizens Advisory Committee. You said something towards the end also about the district being about supporting alternative education.
Yes.
Can you give some examples of what those might be and what you would see the district's role in doing that?
Yeah, I'll give you a great example. The school district maintains a website, as you all know, and on that website is an entire page dedicated to charter school information. A lot of that information is questionable at best, and also is not accurate with respect to what the Pennsylvania Department of Education puts on their website regarding charter schools. So those are the kinds of things where, you know, and again, if we renamed the school district the education district, it's a sea change in terms of a mindset. What are we focusing on? We're focusing on education, we're not focusing on the schools. We don't care whether it's a charter school, homeschooling, whether it's unschooling, whether it's, you know, distance learning, that, we want to be able to focus on the educational component, and when we have things on the district website that, you know, are questionable at best, in terms of if you're asking me personally, then I think that presents an image that we're not, we're not very positive about that. In addition, you, in addition, the school board two years ago put it, put in the, passed the resolution about charter school stuff, and, you know, there's different ways to go about that, and I don't think an antagonistic way is the best way, so.
Peter?
Sorry.
That was my question.
Okay.
You're good.
Cool.
Just answered it, and thank you very much for serving on the CAC.
Cool, thank you, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you so much.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Colby, welcome.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
So thank you all for giving me the opportunity to chat with you tonight. To give you a little background on myself, I was born and raised in Phillipsburg, lived here until I was in my mid-20s and moved away for a while, right? While I was out and about, I ended up finding my husband, we adopted a son, and we were in some places that didn't have a good quality education, didn't allow us to provide a safe environment for him. First place we thought of coming back to was here. State College provides a great quality education, a great sense of community, and I'm excited that we're a part of that again. To go through a little bit of some of the things that I'd like to bring to the table if appointed to the board, I'd love to work with the board to develop a pipeline for internal candidates, so as people retire and senior administration, that we have a pipeline built to fill those positions with quality local candidates and retain our talent here. I'd love to make sure and work with all of you to make sure that we are diverse and inclusive in providing a great quality public education to all students of the State College Area School District. I think it's, it's super important that our kids come to school and feel safe, welcomed, loved, and I think it's important that we find ways to provide for these students that they might not be getting at home. Not everybody in the area is afforded the same, I guess, economical benefits as some of the other areas of town, right? That's one of, a big misconception a lot of people outside of State College have, right? That everybody here is just wealthy and has the best of the best, and that's not the case, and we need to make sure that we're not letting any of those kids fall through the cracks. So, thank you, that was short, sweet, quick. I'll take any questions you all have.
I'm going to turn this way first. Any questions over here?
Well, I believe we're aware you have announced that you're interested in running, so that would be the answer to that question.
Yep.
Yeah, can you, would you be willing to say a little bit more about how you think being, as a board member, you would be able to work with, you know, administrators, teachers to retain and develop, to develop and retain talent?
Absolutely, so I guess I should have included this in my background a little bit. So through my career, I primarily worked in sales, right, different leadership positions within sales, and part of my magic sauce within leading these teams was developing people into new leaders, right? If we can identify great teachers that are getting the job done and showing they care about the kids and they care about the mission of the school district, why can't we help them career path towards becoming a principal within the district, or moving into a leadership role? So I think just getting down on that front line and working with our teachers and understanding that a little bit better. Thank you.
Debbie?
Hi, thanks for being here. In your cover letter to the board, you mentioned one of your qualifications was budget management, so could you just talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely, so in a handful of my sales career positions, I've worked for some startups, I've worked for different sized companies, and that came along with managing budgets on expenditures for travel, expenditures for, you know, just, I mean, things like office supplies and salaries, and could we afford to hire more salespeople based on what we had left? So in that world, I understand some budgeting aspects, so yeah, I think I could bring that to the table as well.
Thank you.
Did you raise your hand, Miriam? No, okay. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Jim Leos, welcome.
Okay, members of the school board, thanks for this opportunity to talk to you about my application for the vacancy on the school board. First and foremost, I'm a believer in quality public education, and what I mean by that is an education that's funded by the taxpayers, which enables all students to develop their talents and succeed. In order to do this, a school board has to hire the right people, first and foremost, administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, and staff, that provide, and then we need to provide them with policy, vision, and the resources they require to get the job done. The State College School District needs to continue to nurture not just the academics, but the whole student, and I'm talking about extracurricular activities, personal safety, mental health needs, career interests, and nutritional needs. And as you are all aware, in particular, some of the newer members, there's a pretty steep learning curve with regard to the duties and responsibilities and procedures of a well-functioning school board. So the person who fills the remainder of misconception's term will probably have at most 10 months to succeed in this job, and I propose as a former member of the school board, I might be able to come up to speed much more quickly than others without this experience. During the first two years that I was on the school board, I participated in the process of hiring and onboarding a new superintendent, that was Dr. O'Donnell. Since the school board is in a similar situation now, I believe, I offer my services to help with that onboarding of the superintendent, to help him or her become more familiar with both, not just the school community, but the community at large. I believe I can leverage my existing relationships with the community to help onboard the new superintendent, and as you're all aware, the hiring of a superintendent is probably the most significant decision that a school board makes, because the success of a superintendent is a large factor in the success of a school district. I have two college-age students who both received excellent educations during their time in the State College School District, and I believe their ability to succeed at the next level, they're both students at Penn State, is largely a testament to the firm foundation that they received from the State College Area School District. In addition, I have a third child who is about halfway through his State College journey. I'm very pleased with how his education is going and progressing, and for all the support that he receives, and I want to ensure that all of our students receive the same kind of education and support that my children have received. You know, one of the primary responsibilities of a school board is determining the budget, stewarding taxpayer funds to make quality education possible. And during my time on the school board and on the Finance and Audit Committee, I made it a priority to make sure that we were effective stewards of taxpayer funds. While some may consider budgeting process rote or even boring, I believe it's, what our budget priorities are very much the same as what our policies are. They elicit our values. What we choose to fund, partially fund or not fund, says a lot about our priorities as school district, and has a profound effect on the district's ability to improve and innovate public education. When I was on the school board, I helped draft the Inclusive Excellence Policy, which put into motion many of our current efforts in diversity, equity, and inclusion. And one of the primary goals of this was actually to close the achievement gap, which Dr. Fuller mentioned, both in wealth and racial achievement gap, and that, I'll make that a priority if I'm chosen to fill out this remainder of this term. And in conclusion, since I will not seek to run for any office in the 2023 election cycle, I will be able to devote my entire energy toward fulfilling the remaining months of this term, and ensuring that our team of 10 functions as efficiently as possible, and for the sake of our students, our teachers, our staff, and the larger State College Area School community. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions or comments for Jim?
Thanks for stepping up. Thanks for putting yourself forward.
Okay.
After 12 years of your previous commitment, I think it says a lot that you're willing to give more of your life to this work.
I was asked by some members of the community, to be quite frank, so...
Laurel, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did.
And also thank you. You talked about the importance of budgeting and the importance of a great education. What, aside from contributing the finances, what other things can the district be doing to work on maintaining and even improving our education?
Well, you know, one of my particular priorities when I was on the school board was the Career Technology Center, and I think we're at an inflection point kind of there, because, you know, we've always served what we call the completers, which are the people that fulfill a curriculum in the CTC and then end up getting a credential and, or basically go right into a career after. But we've also used the CTC, since we're in a rare situation where we have one that's built into our high school, we've also used that to provide electives, and a lot of times, you know, people that take an architecture course, or a coding course, or a networking course, they found out what their true, you know, mission in life is from that, and I think we're at the point between wanting to make the completers, you know, succeed, and, but also being able to provide, do we have the capacity to provide for the other children that choose to, you know, find their life's mission maybe through the CTC courses?
Jim, so you talked about onboarding a new superintendent.
Yeah. Yes.
Tell me what that looks like for you.
Well, you know, one of the things that, that even, you know, even somebody that's already been in the school district, when you, when you step up into that superintendent role, I think you, you, you become the face of the school district. And it's, it's, you, you have to develop not only relations, you know, probably the reason you got there was because you were a very effective educational leader and you were, you were very, you know, you, you treated your people well and you, you helped them develop. But there's a larger thing, there's fundraising, there's good relations with the business community, you know, things like center ready with the CBICs credential, you know. So there's a much more outward-facing gaze for a, for a superintendent than there is for an assistant superintendent or a principal. You really become the face of the school district. And so that's what I'm talking about, about onboarding a superintendent.
Thanks.
Miriam.
So, one of the topics you were passionate about was mental health, and I was wondering if you could elaborate that a little bit, like if you have any initiatives with that?
Yeah, well, I think the, you know, I, I think the mental health matters at, at the high school is a really good initiative, but I, you know, particularly, you know, through the pandemic, I think our, our mental health suffered, you know, collective as a school district, not, and I'm not just talking about students, I'm talking about staff and parents. I mean, you know, I, I was going crazy helping educate my child at home during the pandemic. And, and so I, I really think that emphasis on counseling and emphasis on, on, on clubs and mentoring like Mental Health Matters does, that's really important. And it particularly, you know, if, at the high school level, you know, where the, we likely, we're more likely to see mental health challenges.
Thank you, Jim. We're out of time, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Brian Renaud is online.
Hello, everyone. Can, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, great. Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm, I'm really appreciative of the time and it's great to hear the passion from some of the other candidates around education here in State College. But again, for everybody, my name is Brian Renaud. I'm currently the, the Director of Retail Fuel Pricing and Analytics at Sheets. I would like to avoid any discussion on gas prices tonight. But yeah, so, so all joking aside, you know, I'm, I'm originally from Ridgeway, Pennsylvania, small town about an hour and a half northwest of here, but I've been in and around the State College community for as long as I can remember. More recently, my wife and I built a home in Port Matilda about two years ago. And my family will tell you I bleed blue and white, and I, and they'll also tell you that State College is my favorite place on earth, absolutely my favorite place on earth. You know, I'm a two-time graduate of Penn State. My undergrad degree is in IST, and I also did my MBA at, at Penn State. I bring about 20 years of experience, national and global business experience, you know, first starting on Wall Street in New York with JP Morgan Chase and Lehman Brothers. We all know the story of Lehman Brothers back in 2008. You know, after that happened, I went back to grad school. I ended up back in, I ended up down in Dallas, Texas, working for American Airlines, where I led revenue management strategy for all of the UK and Europe flights as part of a joint business with British Airways. So I do bring a lot of international business experience to the table. For the last seven years, I've been with Sheets. And again, you know, I, I had up all the fuel pricing for the company across all six states and 650-plus stores. Yeah, and just, just some other things that have happened more recently in my career. You know, I was named the National Category Manager of the Year for Fuel in 2021 by CSP Daily News. And then back in 2020, I was named Blair County's, named to Blair County's Top 20 Under 40 list by the Altoona Mirror. You know, what prompted me to seek this vacancy? You know, I, I would just say this, first and foremost, you know, I've got two daughters in the, in the State College School District, one in third grade, one in first grade in Gray's Woods Elementary, and I've got another daughter starting in kindergarten there next year. So my household is absolutely crazy with three girls nine and under. That being said, you know, I've been, you know, I've been involved in recruiting students out of college for almost two decades, and I can tell you this flat out, you know, the talent seems to be getting worse over time rather than getting better. And I, I strongly feel that the educational system of today is impacted more heavily by things like political wokeness on both sides of the aisle, you know, rather than tangible, relevant, value-accretive skills focus. What we, what I really think we need is more business leaders helping to craft educational paths, you know, rather than let all lifetime educators. That's really kind of a one-opinion-based focus. You know, in terms of opinion and diversity, you know, the diversity of opinion from a business leader rather than an educational leader is pretty powerful. And if you want a different lens that comes to the table, that isn't constrained by that solely education-focused background, you know, I believe I'm really a good choice. In terms of particular issues that I'd like to tackle, you know, really, it kind of comes off the backs of what I just described, and I'm really looking to create better leaders in the State College community and beyond. You know, our community and our country really needs it. You know, if you look around at some of the largest issues we have around debt, health and wellness, extreme political divide, general anxiety, we're headed in the wrong direction. Fortune Magazine just came out with a study that said 50%, 57% of Americans, you know, couldn't handle a surprise expense of $1,000. That's really scary, right? You know, and folks are having meltdowns over the right to freedom of speech, you know, even here locally on Penn State's campus. And in my humble opinion, right, censorship doesn't solve bad speech, better speech solves bad speech, and that starts with a strong business-oriented educational foundation. And, and really, you know, these negative trends or these trends that I've just described, they start at a young age when kids are really being molded into who they will become. And so my, you know, my goal would be to, you know, give these students more open exposure to local businesses in a real way, a real tangible way, and show them what a path to success looks like. And so, you know, really more integration between local leaders in the community with the students. You know, and again, just, you know, our nation's become so vulnerable, you know, and so I, you know, I want to make sure the focus is on, you know, making sure that my kids, as well as other kids in the district, you know, have equal opportunity for basic success with a chance for very high upside outcomes that are diverse and achievement-oriented. You know, I'd like to develop an educational framework.
Thank you so much, Mr. Renaud. That was five minutes. And so now I'll go to the board to see if there are any questions for Mr. Renaud. Oh, Debbie, yes.
Hi, thank you for being with us, and I'm sorry we had to cut you off. So hopefully, if we have a little bit of time at the end, we can let him finish his last, I mean, you know, if we don't have that many questions. I am curious, in, in your resume, you list, I think that you work in Altoona, and so I'm just wondering about your time availability for meetings and being able to do things like the school visits and such, if you have to commute so far for work every day? If you could just speak to that a little bit?
Absolutely, that's a great question. So I, I, I'm very flexible, work through a hybrid model at Sheets, so I can be in State College as needed. Add to that, I start my day pretty early, so I end pretty early, so I'm, I'm generally available, you know, 3:00 PM and beyond in the evenings.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Laurel?
Thank you again for joining us, and I'll ask the question about your intentions in terms of running either for this or any other office in this election cycle.
Yes, I do plan on running later this year.
Thank you.
Yep.
Peter?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Renaud. Can you, would you be willing to say or explain or say a little bit more about the, the issue of what the, the threats to the nation are and maybe a little bit more about what that means for the district and its education?
Yeah, you know, it, it sort of takes me back to the phrase, you know, the worst thing that's ever happened to you is the worst thing that you know about and that you can sort of work through. And so I would love the ability to give students more of a global feel for real problems that are happening out there beyond just what's right in front of them, five feet in front of them in the State College community. And so my take is that there's, there's an opportunity to really drive home skillsets that would better sort of combat those larger issues, whether that's political in nature, financial in nature, or even just, hey, what I want to be in 20 years, and what are the risks that are in front of that path, and how can I sort of overcome those things to get where I need to get to?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Renaud, for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Taylor, welcome.
Hello. And thank you to the Board of Directors for the opportunity to be interviewed for this vacancy. I wanted to start by introducing myself to you and also to the community. My name is Stephanie Taylor. I'm the mother of three girls. The oldest two are students at Coral Street Elementary. The youngest is a preschooler who can't wait to join kindergarten. She's very ready to join her older sisters at Coral. My partner Sasha Meinrath is the Palmer Chair of Telecommunications at Penn State, and we moved to State College about eight years ago when he received his appointment. And we are so grateful that we ended up here, we're so grateful to live in such a supportive, vibrant, kind, community, and one with such an excellent school system. And professionally, I've spent the last 15 years running multiple public interest and advocacy organizations that I co-founded, including the Progressive Change Campaign Committee, the Progressive Change Institute, and P Street. And through these organizations, I've helped hundreds of local, state, and federal candidates run for office. I've raised over $35 million in grassroots donations for candidates and causes. And I've lobbied over the years on issues that are very important to working families, issues like the child tax credit, expanding Medicare, expanding the CHIPS program, the expansion of free meal programs in schools, and, you know, in general, support for families particularly during the pandemic. I'm also a children's book author, and I hold a PhD in American history. My first job was also as a union organizer. I spent several years in Appalachia helping nurses and childcare workers form unions. I'm interested in serving on the school board because I believe deeply that a vibrant, thriving, public school system is essential to our community, to our country. And I believe that my professional experience and personal commitment to State College would make me useful to the board. When I thought about serving, my first question to myself was, what would or could I contribute to the board? And in addition to my experience with administration and budgets, I would be excited to help build even stronger ties between the school district and the community, to look for funding opportunities and assist with that process, and to initiate more ways to serve and support parents. And I'd like to offer a few specific examples. As a parent myself, I'm deeply familiar with the struggles of being a parent in the US today. There's never enough time, there's never enough money, and it's a constant scramble to provide educational and physical enrichment for our kids, especially on a budget. And a project I would love to work on is to share more information about the activities and opportunities for kids in the community. Often, that, that information spreads by word of mouth. The school district could play an important role in highlighting those opportunities for families and building more of those bridges and more of those connections. And those public-facing forms of communication and those public-facing services are incredibly important for parents, both in terms of feeling more part of the community and also feeling that positive relationship with the school board and the school district. Relatedly, if budget staffing and logistics allowed, I would always support anything to support parents and to eliminate disparities, in turn, whether it's expanded seal or subsidized meals, and any other way that we could ease the burden on parents and support the holistic health and well-being of our students and families. Funding is always critical for schools, obviously, the more funding, the better. I've spent many years fundraising for my own projects. I'm familiar with a large number of funding opportunities at the federal and state levels. I'm familiar with foundation and individual fundraising, and I would be more than happy to play a role in whatever way that the board found useful or saw fit in helping to expand more funding for our school district. And I believe the last question we were asked to address was whether we plan to run for school director in the 2023 election, and I don't know the answer yet. It depends on what the community thinks, and I would be surveying and talking to community members and making a decision on that.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Taylor? Carlyle?
Just curious, what made you decide to?
Now, well, my youngest is now four, and so I now have more time, and I want to be more involved in the community. And when I started to think about it, this felt like a real place where my particular experiences could be an asset to the board. I do care very much about our public schools, as I mentioned, and as a public school parent, I'm starting to have a greater understanding of the importance of also the parental communications, the parental experience with our public schools, and I want to support that, and I want to be a part of that.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Taylor? Okay. I thought Dan was about to ask something.
Just, thanks for stepping up. Thanks for throwing your hat in the ring. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. And we have Michelle Young. Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank goodness, the last candidate.
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to make a statement to the board. I'm Michelle Young, and I'm a full-time mom of three boys in the SCASD middle schools. My family and I moved to State College in 2015 and I retired, when I retired from the US Navy. I have boys that are identified as special needs and gifted. I retired to stay home and raise my children, completely invested in their academic and overall growth. I'm also passionate about the growth of our youth in general and their development into well-rounded and independent students, prepared to think critically and to positively engage in life after high school. I volunteered for Ferguson Elementary PTO Board position and spent five years on the PTO. I learned more about the district, attending school board regular and committee meetings, as well as reviewing available public documents. I participated in other SCASD committees, including the Citizen Advisory Committee for Technology. I have spoken extensively and developed relationships with many current administrators. My active participation, public comments, and policy change suggestions were even-handed, and I always put students first. As an officer in the US Navy for 22 years, I led diverse teams and organizations supporting naval operations, Navy program management, and Defense Department customer service. I deeply understand fiscal responsibility, organizational leadership, policy development, and community engagement. The knowledge and experience I gained over my career would be valuable to the board in executing the responsibilities to first, set the vision, mission, and strategic, strategic goals for the district. I spent the second half of my naval career in leadership positions that successfully developed and promulgated strategic vision for several headquarters and departmental organizations. Second, to review, revise, and adopt policies. I have extensive career-long experience creating and enforcing organizational policies for personnel, facilities, equipment, customer service, and information technology. Third, to establish and oversee the budget. I'm an experienced and successful manager of defense programs and contracts with budgets from $13 million to $995 million. And fourth, to represent the interests of the school community. My experiences, thought processes, and viewpoints as an Asian-American, a veteran, and a moderate conservative reflect the interests of underrepresented communities within SCASD. My non-education background is not better or worse, it's just different. The district benefits when diversity in thought, learning, and personal characteristics is recognized and utilized. As for my character, I was lauded as a pioneer, part of the first wave of female officers on combat ships, being highly successful in an almost exclusively male-dominated environment. I pride myself on integrity and gratitude. I pride myself on integrity and gratitude. One of my naval evaluators had this to say. She is smart, committed, courageous, and tenacious. She loves working with a team facing tough circumstances and hard choices, and she's passionate about what she believes in. She's intellectually curious, always ready for the next challenge, quick to assess and decide, and can become your best friend in no time at all. She never shies away from learning, or leading, or listening. As to what prompted me to seek this vacancy, I saw it as an opportunity to contribute to the important work the board will cover in the next 10 months, to include hiring the next superintendent, negotiating a teacher contract, as well as supporting the attendance boundaries and facilities analysis. It's also an opportunity to experience for myself the job as a school director and evaluate if the position was one I wished to pursue for a full four-year term. Regarding particular issues I hope to work on, in addition to the work I just mentioned, I would be interested in working more on community outreach, SCASD policy development, and helping with the current policy backlog, and also areas of special education. Finally, as for the elections this year, yes, I currently plan to run for school director during the 2023 election cycle. I thank the board members for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer additional questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Young?
I have-
Dan?
Quick question, Michelle, and thank you for, for joining us, and thank you for stepping up and, and contributing to the school district in this way, and to the community. Um, I was in the military as well a long time ago, um, but I wasn't an officer. I was at, at the enlisted level, the lowest levels of, of rank. But one of the things I learned in that time period was the importance of training. And I learned through, this is in the Army. I learned through their, through these experiences, the manner in which they introduced skills. Uh, sometimes they were conceptual, thought, thinking skills, sometimes they were operational in terms of weapons use and things like that. Um, but there was a way to do it that they must have found effective because they kept doing it. So the question I have for you is, what did, in your experience, when you were working with people under your, in your command, what kinds of principles did you acquire from that that you think might be helpful in a school setting in terms of, in terms of education and training of, of others, human beings?
Yeah, so I also, the IT field is, is my, was my field of, of service in the Navy. And it's very, very training-heavy, it's training and actually retention-heavy as well. You, it, it's very, very similar to, to like a, to a school district in that you set up curriculum, and the curriculum builds. So when you, when you recruit your sailors and you run them through the initial basic education, um, then they select their field of service. And you start at basic schools, you start the way, so the way the Navy does it is, you start the class, you have initial academic classes, but then you go out and you practice those skills for a bit. Once you practice those skills, you come back and you, and then you get more education. The point of this is that, um, and I think that I, I completely agree, and I'm happy to see the direction of education move on to a more hands-on approach. Um, instead of a stand in the front and lecture to students, um, I think that that give information, have some hands-on in the classroom, give more information, and continue to have hands-on is the best ability, is the best way to do that. Um, that also requires a certain skill set, I think, as a teacher. In that, um, you have to be comfortable with that, with that rhythm in the classroom. And so, um, so that's where I would draw some of that. I think as, um, in regards to the school board, um, and, and the effects that you would have as a, as a director in the job, um, most of that would have to do with curriculum. So to be honest with my thoughts in regards to curriculum that I've gone through, um, since I've been in the state college area to include the social studies curriculum, some of the EL, the draft ELA curriculum, um, it tends to be very generic, um, in, in my personal opinion. Um, as well as some of the policy work in the past has been very generic. Um, I think that, that's a fine line between getting so far in the weeds that you're constantly changing curriculum and changing policy every year. And then also being so far and so general with it that it really doesn't have a lot of meaning, and it gives, and it gives, um, it gives too much space, I think, to try and execute. And you'll end up with classrooms that, that teach to different, uh, teach to different standards, per se. And so I think that what I would like to see from a school board level or a school director level would be a little bit more fidelity in what we see in regards to curriculum and policy.
Thank you so much, Ms. Young.
Thank you.
And I also just wanted to extend a thank you to all of the applicants who came tonight. Thank you so much. And also to everyone who came tonight, because it's nice to see that people are caring about what we're doing here. So thank you so much to everybody who's here tonight. Okay, so now we will go on to, um, review the voting process. So, um, the board will take the next few days to review its notes from your presentations. A board discussion will take place at the February 6th, 2023 meeting, where the appointment will then be voted on. So is there any discussion from the board about the voting process? Or does anyone have any questions?
One thing to just double-check with Mr. Etter, because I know with the new Sunshine laws, we have to be very specific about our agenda. But I would, I would presume that, um, simply on our agenda, we can have a motion to approve a new board member, and then we could potentially have a motion at the table, I would assume?
Yes, for the specific. Oh, I didn't know- I'm sorry to interrupt. Simply have it as-
It's calling down from heaven.
Sorry. I, I'm, I'm like the Amy Bader for Monday. So, yes, as you, I think it's, you can have a line item and from the table, or however it's going to happen, you could have a motion for a specific individual.
Just so the public understands, like, we won't be going through like a down-select or whatever things, there'll just simply be a nomination for one of the candidates at the table, and then we'll see how that goes.
Right, and, um, exactly what, um, Amy just said, and, uh, it would be, we will have nominations, and, um, then the candidate would be seconded, and those names, um, would then be, uh, read aloud, and we would each vote.
For a roll call vote, yeah.
Uh, in a roll call vote. So much the same as when we elect, um, board leadership at the beginning of, of every year. So, uh, pretty simple, and, um, democratic, and fair, and transparent. And that will be on the evening of February 6th. So, any other board discussion about the voting process? Okay, we will move on to public comment. Um, each individual will be allotted up to three minutes for items discussed on the agenda. Public comment is a chance for community members to share their thoughts with the board. It is not a time for the board to answer questions or engage in conversations. Um, however, you can always email the board at all hyphen board at scasd.org. So is there anyone in, here in person, um, first, who would like to make a public comment? Sure, if you could just come up to the podium, um, and state your name and where you reside in the district, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Krista Gallagher, and I reside in Patton Township. And I just would like to say that, thank you, everybody who got up and spoke. Um, that was very nice tonight, thank you, it was pretty brave of you all. I just wanted to say that, um, like, the first, um, person who spoke, Nathan, he brought up that this board is made solely of Democrats. As a parent who's a conservative, and there's a good chunk of conservatives in the school district, we have no representation on the board. And it's hard, it's hard to have nobody that represents us. And there is one person here tonight that, even though she's not on the board, she represents us. She's the one that comes to the board meetings, she's the ones that comes to the committee meetings, she's the one that we go to, that we ask her questions to, and she always answers us. She has the knowledge, she has the leadership, and she might not be on the board, but to us, she's the person who represents us, and that's Michelle Young. You talked, the, the three words that came up tonight over and over again were inclusive, equitable, and diverse. Where is that on the board for conservatives? The, the board doesn't represent us. There, I mean, we have no, there's no affiliation for us at all on the board. And I just, you have to take that into account. If you, if, if you go right away and just choose another Democrat. I, I mean, to us, she set the bar so high as a conservative that we think if she can't make it on the board, how will another conservative ever make it on the board? How, how, how will another conservative ever even attempt to run? If someone is qualified and with such leadership and dedicated as she is, how will anybody else, how will a mom, stay-at-home mom, ever have a chance to, to, to just try to run for a school board? That's all I'd like to say, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, is there anyone else here in person that would like to make a public comment? Aaron, yeah? If you could, well, I just said your name, but, yeah.
Hi, I'm Aaron Miller. Um, I'm, you know, some of you may know I am running for the school board at some point, but not here, not tonight. Um, I actually decided to come tonight in person because I wanted to see uh, the energy and the interest and, you know, the number of people in the community who are kind of stepping up and interested in filling this role. Um, I don't necessarily agree with all of you, but, um, I wanted to echo a, a lot of what Dan and Laurel and other people were saying, is that, you know, thank you for stepping up because it means a lot to me that there are people who are interested in making sure that the schools are um, functioning well for my kids as well. So I just wanted to say, I appreciate you.
Anyone else who would like to make a public comment here in person? Okay, is there anyone online? Is there anyone online? No, no, okay. Um, then we will go on to future agenda planning. Um, looking ahead to future agenda planning, we have, um, our February 6th, 2023 Committee of the Whole and Regular Meeting. Um, and that will have information reports of culture, climate, and learning, facilities and grounds, finance and audit, and action items, um, Policy 122, 123, and 123.1, um, and the election of a new board member. Um, and then on our February 20th, 2023 Regular Meeting, we have action items of approval of revised committee assignments, Policies 800.1, 123.1, 815.5, 815.6, and 815.7. And we have a research proposal for special education and memorial field turf replacement and cleaner equipment. Um, and information reports on Policies 320, 321, 709, 805.1, and 805.2, uh, Attendance Boundaries and Facilities Analysis Update, New Sport Proposal for Girls Wrestling, and North and Physical Plant Update. Uh, I would now like to call for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Still moved.
Okay, that's been first and seconded. All in favor of adjourning? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Saying none, okay, thank you.